Welcome to the Finance and General Purposes Committee meeting of Ramsgate and Council. First item is apologies for absence.
We have apologies for councillor Young, who's unwell, and councillor Huxley, who has a personal commitment.
Thank you. Second item is declarations of interest. Does anybody have a declaration of interest in respect of any item on the agenda? No? Third item is minutes. Do you approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Finance and General Purposes Committee, held on the 9th of November?
I propose...
Second, Jim.
Questions? Thank you. Is that accepted?
Yeah, agreed.
Agreed, agreed.
I don't think I was there, so I can't.
Fourth item is finance and budget. 4.1 is to receive a written report from Miss E. Richford, town clerk and finance officer, detailing budget expenditure for September to October 2022. Do you want to say anything?
No, I... I think possibly a lot of the information in here is going to be overwritten by actually the budget discussion. One thing that was incorrect in last year's budget is it was drafted under the assumption that the Architectural Heritage Fund's grant had been drawn down. But actually, we haven't drawn that down yet, so we do have more in the reserves than than thought.
Jim?
Yes?
I propose the recommendations, yeah.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favour? 4.2 is to consider a first draft of the budget for the council for 2023/24, along with explanatory note, and to consider what further changes should be explored prior to consideration by the council in December 2022. Could I just remind councillors that it includes salaries and staff? So if you could, if you do want to discuss that, we can go into private session. Town clerk.
Chair, would you like me to actually go through the details of the report, or?
Yes.
Right. So this report accompanies the first draft of a budget for 2023/24, and sets out key information for councillors to be aware of. You are of course welcome to ask for other information. The attached budget has been drafted in conjunction with the Chair of the FNGP, and the specifics of course can be changed by the council. It is, for the purpose of drafting this document, it has been assumed that there should be no change to the pre-set. TDC will confirm the tax base in late December, and there are always some changes to the number of ratable properties. For now, the same pre-set as 2022/23 has been used. It should be noted in the current year's budget that the opportunity was taken to consolidate and allocate accrued savings into several ring-fenced budgets, for example, capital works and assets budget. For the purpose of the annual budget, these ring-fenced budgets have been placed outside of the the general income and expenditure. However, there are in some places a recommendation to top these up from next year's pre-set. It is also recommended that several budgets from 2022 and 2023 are moved over to the ring-fenced budgets when they're for a project that's likely to be ongoing across the financial years. The committee is not asked tonight to make a recommendation, but consider if there's any questions or areas for further investigation. There's two more opportunities to be discussing the budget coming up. So first of all, at December's council meeting, the draft business plan for 2023/27 is considered. And then the council can consider whether the, there's any fundamental changes that need to be made to the budget to bring it in line with the strategic objectives. And then in January, there's a specific council meeting dedicated to setting the budget, at which point there will hopefully be a final picture. But if not, we've still got the council, the ordinary council meeting at the end of January for any last-minute changes before the pre-set needs to be submitted. So tonight, there doesn't need to be a final, final plan. So specific notes. Next year's activities at Radford House, meanwhile, uses and construction costs are difficult. There are too many unknowns at the moment. It's been assumed that this project will be funded by the ring-fenced capital purchases and asset acquisition budget. However, we have kept utilities, rates, insurance, and small repairs and service contracts within the pre-set, because I think it's advisable for the pre-set to be making some contribution towards Radford House, for it to be a regular part of the pre-set that that could be ongoing. The VAT refund paid, it's a figure that writes itself off. So what's on the income side and the expenditure side will be as high or low as it is. What is paid out is reclaimed. At the moment, we make one VAT reclaim per year, but you can also make them intermittent points in the year if for some reason the the payment of VAT was creating a cash flow problem. Custom house income, the expected income at the custom house has decreased, but this is because a part of a debt from a previous tenant has been written off, and that was with approval from the council. Allotment income, the allotment tenants are currently given one sum to pay, there's no breakdown as to the element of rent and water. And as the water charges are increasing, it means the rental contribution could be decreasing. It is recommended that next year that we consider looking into whether this sum needs to be broken, split out. Visitor Information Centre income and expenditure. The majority of this income and expenditure is reliant on coach ticket sales, whereby the council takes the money for the ticket, and then we're invoiced by, for example, National Express, and then we get a 10% commission on all sales. But it does mean that if the coach sale-related income is more or less, the expenditure is also more or less. Within the Visitor Information Centre budget, there's 3,000 for practical activities in the VIC, either improvements to displays or tourism literature. Ramsgate Events Equipment, this was formerly known as the Rio Equipment. Rio have confirmed that this equipment is now owned by Ramsgate Town Council, and I would suggest that we consider that this equipment and the stalls make up a Ramsgate Town Council events equipment, and that there'll be a future report to the council, this committee, about how to manage this equipment.
That's for hiring it out in the long?
That's it. I think now we can consider it ours, and properly audit it, and consider actually what is of use, what is not of use, what would be really useful for the local community, but we don't actually own yet. Are there things that we're hanging on to but are broken or nobody needs? We can have a proper, proper review of it. Staffing salary at Rees, there has been two increments for the staff in in the current year. The increase awarded following the staffing review by the Association of Clerk's and the recently announced National Joint Council uplift. The result of these, and I think there was possibly some under-budgeting of the staffing this year, has meant that there is an overspend, oh, there will be an overspend in the staffing budget of about 35,000 pounds. In the current year, I think this overspend will be cancelled out by some other natural underspends that are occurring, but it does present a problem for 2023/24, because if your, if your pre-set is this amount, and your staffing took up this percent, and is now taking up this percent, but you don't want to reset. Or you need to revisit the staffing levels. Staff training, there's been a concerted effort this year that we've done quite a lot of general training for all staff. Equalities training, first aid, risk assessments, health and safety, GDPR, personal safety. And next year, now we've got the basics covered, I would suggest some more officer-specific training, and that the budget could be decreased, decreased a bit. Custom house rent, this will increase, this is an increase that has been approved by the council following negotiation earlier in the year with our landlord. The town promotion and beautification budgets are as recommended by the town promotion committee. Christmas and summer lights, we are coming to the end of a 10-year contract, and next year, it's the town promoter is going to consider and bring different options, opportunities, and bring quotes to, I would hope, you know, whether we continue with leasing, or whether there's things that there's actually merit in us owning. I think this budget, we could look at hopefully spending a bit, a bit less. The Ramsgate Fund is consistently undersubscribed, and as such, a reduction has been suggested.
Is that true, though? Because the last meeting, we were, there wasn't money in it, was there?
It's the events budget, but...
Oversubscribed.
Yeah.
Well, could it just be one fund? Because I have concerns that events, the cost of events is going through the roof, and that's my experience as an events manager, and I think we need to maybe, it needs to be one fund. I mean, there's, in my time here, living in, I mean, 10 years, I don't think there's been an increase to the events budget, but there's been an increase in Boston, also an increase in events. It's, I think it's the one fund that people actually see something happening with their money that then, that involves them. So I, I think we should just, it should be one fund, we've got one form now, so it should be one fund, and view the situation at the end of next year. We can always transfer the money back, it can always come back, but if we take it, and we've got an over application, then we can't get that money back. We can just evidence savings at the end of the year, that would be my personal opinion, in terms of somebody runs an event and works alongside other people that run events.
It obviously could be one fund, and it's up to the council whether we do that. But they, I mean, the two funds did have two distinct purposes.
Yeah, I understand that.
That's my question, so can I have clarification of what the two funds do? Just to check.
Well, the, the events fund is self-evident, is to support events in the town.
Ramsgate's funds for capital items.
Originally, it was capital items.
It isn't capital items, just because we changed it, that's why I'm going down this path. Because we actually opened it up, so we've done that already.
We changed it, I think, to include things like the employment of staff. But they've still got, in my mind, two purposes, in that the capital fund isn't tied purely to it.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know when we're going to have this conversation with regards to the fund, but that was my point, because I think that, in some ways, I still think I'd quite like to keep them separate. So if the Citizens Advice Bureau and everything want funding from something, I'd like that funds be something specific for those types of groups to do things. And possibly, we need to put more money into the events fund from somewhere, so I agree with what councillor Green's saying with regards to prices. I'm not sure amalgamating these is the answer, however, but I'd need to look at how we do things.
Sorry, I'm not
Not for the credit.
Mr. In the answer, but what actually does the Ramsgate Fund do that's different to the events fund? Sorry, I
Well, it supports organisations that want to do things in the town for
Art events.
Art events?
Art events.
Citizens Advice Bureau is a good example of that.
Citizens Advice Bureau is a different head of the community, so. But we've bought laptops for the Sea Cadets, I think.
Yeah.
I just think if
Yes, but not just, we changed it, and not just
I just think if not all of us are clear about what it's for, then that's probably a reason why people aren't applying to it. I mean, I don't know whether I can make suggestions now, but it always seems but okay, it always seems to me that the events, the events project is oversubscribed, and the Ramsgate Fund is oversubscribed. So maybe there needs to be a different distribution of the whole pot, so we're not reducing it. And I'm sure Eileen could do some investigation as to how much money has been requested for events, the total amount, not what we've given, to see the annual request for money, does that make sense?
Well, I can tell you now, the request for money is probably doubled.
Exactly. So that's oversubscribed.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify that the Grantley Citizens Advice Bureau is covered under a community services
Proposals, yes.
Which was to cover Citizens Advice Bureau, or previously when there's been funding to break prices. If there was maybe going to be a different bank.
Oh, that makes sense, sorry, yeah, thank you.
In the past, we've paid for things like repairs to roofs and floors and equipment for various authority organisations.
Yeah. It was, um
Yeah.
Salvation Army, where does that fit into it? And if we have any spare money or underspent, can that not be channeled, especially this winter?
Well, we've asked the Salvation Army a number of times now to put in a bid to the Ramsgate Fund. I think the town clerk is talking to them about it.
May I, Chair?
Yeah.
I met with Carl at the Salvation Army at the beginning of the week, and I will write up notes from that meeting and share it with you, it's about their current activities and pressures.
Sure. I think it should probably just go for councillor Makeyson, is that this budget is for starts next year?
Yes.
Not now.
Yes.
So that's, so it wouldn't matter this week, we've already got, whatever we've got in the budget now.
By next year, after May? No, is it after May or after March?
After, after April.
April.
After April.
Round about, then.
Any other, any other questions about any item?
Can I just make, oh, sorry, did you want?
I've got some questions, are we, if we're going to look at that?
What's that?
But not where we've got up to so far on the town clerks. Would you like me to keep going?
Yeah, yeah, let the town clerk go.
At the end of that presentation, yes. So we've just mentioned about the Community Services Grant. The administration budget remains very much the same. Touch wood, there was a slight, there was an over-budget for insurance costs, which has now been reduced. The IT and telecommunications contract is due to go through a competitive tendering process, and actually, some early discussions with the current provider is that they could provide a much reduced service. Allotments, there are a number of small works at the allotment sites. Things like guidance regarding legionnaires. We need to change all the taps, so there's, there's things from a health and safety perspective that need to be addressed. Also, something that is really an unknown at the moment, but whether we might want to change the line of the fencing at Chilton Lane, depending on what happens with the easement, which is the right of access across our land to a parcel of land that's now sold. It is proposed that the 20,000 allocated for capital purchases be moved to a ring-fenced budget. Although I am concerned that CCTV and composting toilets this year will exhaust this budget in the current financial year.
Could I just ask, on the subject of allotments, can I go back to the allotment income? When we're saying that we're expecting that the water element is going to be more expensive, have we agreed that we're keeping the rents as they are? Have we already agreed that as a council? I've lost track, I'm afraid.
No, we haven't agreed it.
Right. So we're working, this is working on the assumption that we're keeping the rents as they are?
Yeah.
Yes?
We won't have agreed it until
Yes, I was trying to work that, I was trying to
The allotment contracts actually have just renewed. So we would be looking at the allotment income received in October next year.
Okay. Thank you.
We did renew them just before
Yeah.
You came in.
Yeah. The neighbourhood plan, it has not been envisaged that much expenditure is required in the current year other than the administrative support already approved. However, on a meeting with our professional advisor earlier in the week, he said that early in the next year, it is likely that we'll need some technical support in, when responding to TDC about our plan and questions that might come up.
Still got more public consultation to do.
So it is proposed that the amount remaining from the 20,000 budget this year, whatever's remaining, be ring-fenced for use next year. Highways Improvement Plan, it has proposed that any balance from the current year be moved to a ring-fenced budget, and another 15,000 pounds potentially be added in. Charlotte Court, retail macking of pathways is required, quotes have been requested. With regard to markets, we've all organised, there's going to be a monthly speciality market via a local market organiser to run throughout next year to test the area, and then more bookings will be encouraged. These planned markets will be using our existing stalls and equipment. So I think actually a year of testing the site, good idea, before then thinking what we could purchase. Plant machinery and equipment, technicians' equipment has been audited in the current year, and various disposals and upgrades have been arranged. I think this budget can be reduced now for next year. Albion Gardens, there's been a long-running budget of 21,000 that's carried over for several years now, that was intended for when the council takes ownership of the land. It's not going, taking place, so I think that can just, could be reabsorbed back into the accounts. Montefiore Woodland, the budget is a sum of money that was given to the council when the land was transferred. It is recommended that this be moved to a ring-fenced budget, and I think it can be continued to be used up for a few years before we need to think about topping that up. Operating contingency, 250,000 pounds was previously ring-fenced for emergencies. This money is intended for honouring the council's commitments during financial problems that are outside the council's control. For example, if we didn't receive the pre-set on time. It is hoped that these funds are never required, but a necessary part of good budgeting, and if we didn't have them, the external auditor would criticise the council's financial management if adequate reserves are not held. In the current council year, the council via 10,000 from this budget for decorative lighting at the Harbour Arches. And it was recommended that this budget be replenished next year, but I have mentioned to councillor Green I think that possibly this budget could be reduced a bit. 200 a quarter of the pre-set, you don't actually have a quarter of your bills in the quarter of the year. I wouldn't suggest letting it go below 200,000, though. But I think possibly last year I went in, my recommendation was, was quite high.
Cautious.
Cautious.
Agree, yeah.
Business rates, the council hasn't previously budgeted for business rates, but they do need to now be included. The reason that the rates look higher this year than next is only because this year we were paying three and a half years back. Addition to future capital projects and asset acquisition, if every penny of the pre-set every year was required that year, it would mean that we could never plan for bigger projects. So I think that there does need to be an amount that the pre-set can manage to be put aside to build up for future projects and activities, yeah. New project contingency was previously the miscellaneous budget. Proposed change in name, just for clarity. Committee is asked to consider if there are any immediate changes or areas for investigation prior to the council considering if the budget aligns with the strategic objectives of the business plan, which will be in December.
Not for the credit.
Oh, thank you. There were, well, I know, there were just a couple of things, looking at the actual figures on this sheet. The first one that I was looking at was the KCC recharge for ground maintenance. I appreciate this is a very tiny figure as part of the bigger picture, but I just wondered how many years it's been static for, and whether or not there's any any mileage or any scope within the contract for it to be renegotiated on, or at least reviewed on an annual basis. So that was just a takeaway question, a little. The second one I was a bit concerned about was the utilities allowance for customs house. Is that enough, given the rise in utility costs generally? And we're looking at a rise from seven to nine and a half thousand, and households are expecting a lot more than that increase, so I just wondered if that, that had been considered. And the third question area that I wanted to make sure was under the capital projects and asset acquisitions. Appreciate it says on here that includes the Radford House development, but I also am aware that council have agreed to looking to, I know Albion Gardens has dropped off the edge, but council has agreed to look into a number of other things, of which off the top of my head is the lift, the banstand, destiny, and the town centre market, which could all be quite impact on that budget, and there probably may be more that I have forgotten that may well be in there. So I just wondered if there was any comment on those, that area. That was my things.
You go first.
Thank you. We've referred to the maintenance contract, the SLA with Kent County Council. I don't know the answer, but we can look into that. I don't know the answer, but it it, we can look into that. Uh, with regard to the utili- utilities allowance, that is um as recommended by our utility broker. Looking at how long we're currently fixed in for um and our usage.
Okay, thank you, that that fix, it's fixed in, that that's.
And also there are some. Some ideas afoot for how to re- reduce our um our energy consumption as well. Uh, all the, all the little things that homeowners are also encouraged to do, like we have a thermostat set at twenty one degrees.
We had to issue a wally jumper.
Um.
I'm sure this is music to the ears of the climate change.
Um, so um. I've asked uh heritage to um give us a quote for, to consider how to improve our heat loss through the the roof. So uh hopefully as well as also expenditure, there there's some opportunities for us making some savings.
Uh, thank you.
You your last point, I mean.
Hmm.
We are putting thirty K aside for new project contingencies.
Yeah, it it's this bit on the bottom here that I was just aware of, of how many potential new projects we've actually got under discussion and have had for.
I mean, I mean, it's a good point, but we are putting thirty K aside. And we don't expect the the expenditure on Radford House to take up the whole of that.
Hmm.
Capital project budget.
The whole idea of houses that she should hopefully get some grant funding if we can find some. It was only if we couldn't that we'd need it, that was the whole idea.
I think, I think we're okay, but if council wants to increase that.
I just wanted to raise that and then. If there's any concerns about it, because we do have these potentials in the pipeline.
But perhaps, um, you know, by uh by the next time we look at this.
Yeah.
Have a better idea.
I I accept that. I think I just wanted to flag it more than anything else rather than answers now. Because I know we've got more meetings to come where this is all gonna be fine tuned. So I I just wanted to flag it, that more than anything.
But I think the principle of not increasing the preset.
Oh, completely agree.
Councillor Albin.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um firstly, I'd like to thank you and uh the.
Sam Clark.
Revenue officer, Sam Clark, for the work that is done here. It's uh laid out lovely, it's really good to, it's easy to understand. For me, and I'm very pleased about that, so thank you on that. Uh, two points, um one roughly what councillor uh Quicken has just. Talks about, um if we decide as a council, uh and in agreement with the native council. Would take on the various things that. Um, I was just wondering whether or not it would be, uh, I won't, prudent isn't the right word, but I'll go use it anyway. But prudent, to have a separate legal budget for those items. Um, to, because obviously there will, there will be legal costs for us to to take them on. And that way then, if you've got a separate one there, you you've still got the the rest of that thirty grand you're saying to to deal with the issues you've got. So I was just putting that forward for consideration, uh whether that 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 may be the case. Uh, to go back to as well, what councillor Green was saying about the events and the Rams- the Ramsgate Fund. Bit a bit old fashioned as I am, uh again, it could probably work if you put both things together. Personally, I prefer it to be separate. Um, and the point I was gonna make though is that. Um, the Ramsgate Fund has been reduced in in here from thirty five thousand to twenty five thousand. So could that ten thousand that's gone off there go into the events money? Is that too simple? Or am I looking at that too simply? I'm not sure.
Well, obviously it could.
So so that's just, so that's just a point and that that, I think, um, you know, we need to be careful if we put. The events and the Ramsgate Fund together, and as councillor said, the cost of these are going up. It then then had an impact on on the other part, on the Ramsgate Fund part less.
As it stands, we'd have to fi- we'd have to find that ten K from one budget, other budgets.
Oh, okay.
To maintain that there's no, no increase in preset. However, I expect as as time goes on, we'll find that because of building developments.
Yeah.
That the uh, what we get through the council tax will will increase.
Yeah, uh can I just one last point? Um, I'm pleased to see that the presets, that this has been done with the preset not increased in, and I I would certainly fully support that. Thank you, Chair.
It's just, we've also got that bit of extra money from the Albion Gardens, which we're not going to be using. No longer required, could that not go into?
Yeah, at the moment, the budget bounds.
Definitely might want it though, so that is Albion Gardens, anyway.
Councillor Crispin.
I just wanted to support what councillor Albin said about um finding the ten thousand pounds, put it in the events fund. Um, finding it back out of wherever we put it into, um.
You made a note of that.
And put it into the event.
Is that generally agreed, that we look for ten K from somewhere?
Yeah, yes. Uh, I think the the clerk just said she wants to reduce the contingency by fifty thousand. So the ten thousand is there. What what I'd like to ask is, uh, is if we add everything up. And turn it into a percentage spend, so we've got our contingency, we've got our savings. Because it's always a good idea to save for a rainy day. What percentage of the precept is committed? Does that make sense? Is actually committed to things that happen, staff salaries, events.
All of it.
Uh, no, there'll, there'll be a percentage of that precept which sits in the contingency. So I guess what I'm saying is.
I see what you mean.
If if, you know, if if the precept is a hundred pounds.
Yeah.
And and we, and all our outgoing's are ninety seven pounds, then it, then then we're using ninety seven percent of our precept. Uh, what, I guess what I'm saying is for me, uh because I'm terrible at budgeting, is what's the critical?
Sorry, Chair, but I mean, you just put all that money into the events fund. That's the chair, I'm sorry.
I'm more cautious with other people's money than I am my own, believe me. Uh, I suppose what I'm saying is. Where do, where does it become critical? Is it when we're spending ninety five percent of the precept or? Or ninety five point four, but it's to put it in similar terms, because it's it's clearly not a good idea to spend a hundred percent of your precept. Which is setting yourself up for future failures and an increase in the precept, which is what none of us want. So I guess trying to turn the overall spend or commitment into a percentage would.
Well, at the moment.
Helps.
At the moment, there's seventy five K.
Hmm.
That aren't attributed to specific.
Yeah.
Expenditure.
Does that include, so does that include the contingency?
Yes.
So so we've got, we, so in effect.
Seventy five K of next year's budget isn't committed to any. To the budget head.
Yeah, so that sits into, that that gives us a really good cushion beyond the contingency, which is sensible. But we've got that ten thousand out of that saving, yeah. It just makes it.
Did you, you go ahead.
Um, the uh, the figure to be aware of is um your your operating reserves. That is what the external auditor will be looking at.
With whatever.
Um, actually, I think many, many councils will actually, particularly when you go into the parishes. Every year they will spend every penny.
Yeah, and it's not good.
Um, but actually, it's it's keeping that op- that four months operating reserve is. That that's what the auditor would be looking for.
So it's looking pretty healthy.
Yeah. Because I think the money we, money that we'll get from council tax is almost bound to be too increased. Any other points or questions? Certainly, yes, go ahead.
Can I propose um that uh we move forward with this report? Uh, with the items discussed. So.
Something we have to do.
Events, so and so.
Yes.
That's, you know, I would propose, you're right with that.
Yeah, that's right.
You're right with that.
Set seconded.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, all those in favour? Thank you. Next item is item five, policy and procedures. Five point one to consider to increase the delegated powers of expenditure for emergencies. The town clerk, in conjunction with the chair and the chair of F and G P Committee, to three thousand pounds. Currently, the town clerk has delegated powers to spend up to a thousand pounds. And in emergencies, also a thousand pounds. The clerk.
Thank you. Uh, so at the moment, um, by a single transaction day to day. Limit is a thousand pounds and also in emergencies is a thousand pounds. Um, I would suggest that the uh the emergency figure, which is, uh should be higher. And that that's for things in conjunction with the chair and chair of F and G P. Um, I think having the day to day and emergency figure at the same level is an anomaly.
Councillor Nix.
I propose we increase it.
Yeah, I second that, Chair.
All those in favour? Thank you.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Five point two is to consider and adopt a petitions policy. Don't call.
Uh, not uh uh an essential item, but does um add into the the list of recommendation. Recommended policies for councils. And I thought we could have a, an F and G P committee meeting without at least one policy, one new policy to adopt. Um, add it, yeah, it it gives a a structured way for. Uh, that it sets out how we, how we will manage policy, uh petitions. And also allows, when people want something, the ability to say, right, well, go away and. You know, get some support via a petition.
Question, yeah.
That's wrong.
Um, so I haven't got a problem with adopting a petition process, you know, it's. What we should, was what we should do in a democracy. Um, and the only thing is. What would we accept? I mean, we can't have a ten signature.
Mm hmm.
Petition, we've got to have a figure. Uh, and certainly I think it should be more than councillor, uh, certainly more than uh. Vista McKinley's petition that took part, man. Um, you know, so, um, I I think on normal kind of issues. Uh, unless you've got a figure in mind.
Well, I'd suggest the town clerk, this is a. Paper for us to discuss.
A chair with apologies, there should be a draft policy that was included with the agenda.
No, it wasn't.
Uh, but it's actually, it's, it's not on what was printed for me today, and I wonder whether actually it was emitted from your email. I'd 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 suggest deferring.
Oh, I I assumed that it it was later discussion, it was.
I I I had one. Or you'd consider it approved.
Did it have a figure?
Yes.
You had that figure, I thought.
Um, I think that there was two figures. One was um, uh, a hundred signatures. Uh, there there was kind of two, two different levels of action, and one was a hundred.
Considering T D C's is thirteen hundred, I think. So we're a third of the population, of around a third of the population, I think, of Ramsgate.
That's right, yeah.
Population of Fannet, so maybe that 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 the top bit should be a third of what T D C expects, which is thirteen hundred. Which is what's a third of.
A ton of a lot, a ton of a lot.
It is a lot, yeah.
But you know, these are serious issues, aren't they? Talking about big issues that that might be making us spend money, so you don't want a few hundred.
Just defer and come back when I.
Let's defer, or did I say till till that comes back, then we can discuss it properly. Maybe that come back to the council.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. So we'll move on, yeah. Uh, item six, confidential matters. Propose that we exclude the press from these items. On the grounds that they impact on individual members of staff. Agreed?
Yeah, agreed, agreed.